Hi.
Ready?
Hi. So I'm Regina Downer and six years ago I started a project called My Community Nurse Project covering six mountain towns. I have a, I'm a full-time nurse, I work probably seven days a week. I have a part-time nurse who works with me. No, none of my patients pay, we don't bill insurance, and some of the towns in our catchment area have donated some funds to keep us afloat, but mostly we get funds from the community, you know, not necessarily the towns. The project, the mission of this project is to provide-
I'm sorry, I didn't understand. When you say community, you mean the people in the community who are like, "We love you."
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So the mission is to really provide care and advocacy to anyone of any age. Most of my patients are over the age of seventy, but I do have some younger people-
That's not too far away.
-in my case log. And it's very different from what the VNA does. The VNA will provide a nurse to do catheters and trapes and invasive things. We don't do that. But we can make recommendations and we can help people through difficult medical times. And so we have very quietly had Bonfield patients. And the reason I say quietly is because it's a very big area and we are vulnerable to getting too many people and not being able to provide the care that we have. We have a really great reputation that I'm very proud of. So I do carry some people here confidentially. And we do get calls from out-of-towners who say, "We're coming to our home and can you take care of our mother or our father or my brother?" And that, that's not something we do.
That's, that's not your, your-
No, I do know people who will provide care and I do, you know, and they're very trusted people. I don't hire them. The patients interview them and decide if they're going to work with them or not, and they pay them. But these are people I've known for a very long time. I've been doing nursing for forty-five years and my partner has also been doing nursing for forty-five years. So together it's ninety years of experience and I think we know what we're doing.
It's just the two of you?
It's just the two of us and actually-
Is there somebody else joining up with you or anything?
I would love to. We run a budget of under a hundred thousand dollars a year and we have no overhead except for our funds, the accountant. We don't have an office. I work out of my home, Kathy works out of her home. And when I did the, on that last page, when I did the numbers of home visits we did this year, it was a little bit overwhelming. I'm having a hard time believing that we did over a thousand home visits this year. Some of our people we carry, I've been carrying for six years. Some people I just carry through a phone conversation to try to get them the help they need. Couple of people have connected with New York through, through me. We have a really great relationship with Dartmouth and with Rutland and Southern Vermont Medical Center. And I think it's just because the medical care system is so complicated, I think it's really important to have this service in your community.
So are you, are you looking for funding?
I am not actually looking for funding and let me just say-
Okay. Right now I'm talking.
All right, all right. It's all right. I'm sorry. All right. Good.
I don't, I don't want to usurp funds from another place. I don't want to take over some of, that's not what I do. But I'm in the community and I have been in your community quietly for quite some time and have had patients in your community.
Because we're not listed as one of your-
That is correct because of what I think we are.
You didn't want more people.
You are, you are a big community.
You'd have too many people, is that why?
And we're trying to keep the level of service that we have and the quality that we provide. And so I did not ask Bonfield for funding, but I-
It's Winhall, but okay.
So if we do, if we do, I mean, because we had an agency before that was providing some service that is backed out, we did not give them any money. If we gave some of that, would you be available to give assistance to some of the people in Winhall?
I think that that's exactly what we're hoping to be able to do.
Okay.
Is to be able to come here and provide services, which I already do anyway. It's just pretty quiet. And so that the next year that I write a list that says, you know, over, it would say that Winhall is-
I mean, I'm not sure how many people are aware of it anyway, but I mean, they're limited service somewhat, which is okay.
Actually, actually, a lot of people are actually aware of what I do.
I have directly worked with someone with Regina.
So is it like, like, so we have a community center that is a lot of retired and older people, that elderly people that may, and younger people, but people that might need services? And, yeah, whatever. I'm just wondering.
In general.
So I'm just saying like, I had, I hadn't seen like, and, and they're incredibly great at getting the word out in our community on anything going on. So I hadn't heard anything from, of them or in their calendar or on their newsletters or on any of their sites or anything.
And I think that's a credit to our confidentiality, actually. I think that we are pretty quiet and we're not, we're not trying to drum up business. And as I said, we're not trying to take-
But how does somebody find you Regina?
Word of mouth, yep. Word of mouth.
I can tell you because I've used Regina.
Oh, you did?
She's been very helpful to me and I could probably name five other people that are down here.
Well, that's what she said, there were other people in town.
So most of it is word of mouth.
So where did you get the word from?
Sorry?
Where did you get the word from? I mean, you know, I mean, I, I'm at the post office and I'm at the market.
When you're actually looking-
But if you were sitting, if you told me you had lung cancer, I'd say, "Here."
When you're looking for that type of service, the answer comes up.
Right.
Started to die.
It's, it's not something in normal conversation.
I don't, I tell people, but if somebody, if I see somebody that's-
Yeah, no, I would, I would move that, you know, we had allocated funds to Vermont Nursing Association that we are not sending because they're not providing any service to us. So I would move that, we're not sending them the money. So you're not taking money from another organization. We're not sending them the money.
I don't want to interrupt your move, but what I want to say is that we were six of the towns that were eliminated, which they, they did not let us know. And then when I asked, I was at a patient's home waiting for the services that did not come, I called and they said, "Well, you're not in our catchment area anymore." And I said, "How many of those towns are not in your catchment area?" And they said, "Six." And I'm like, "Okay, so pretty much every one of my towns?"
Yeah.
And they said, "Well, yeah." So what disturbs me about that is that there was no upfront, like, "We're not going to do this."
No, we saw an article.
After the, yeah, exactly. And then after the town meeting where everyone allocated funds in 2023, then people started realizing that we weren't going to get those services. I will qualify that by saying that hospice is available, but most of my patients are not on hospice. They, they would need, say, a visiting nurse coming after a hospital visit. So I was disturbed about that, but I'm not here to say disparaging things about them. I just wish we had, had known.
I agree. Someone also told me, I heard, and I'm not sure the veracity of it, but that Bayada is also still providing?
Bayada is the only one that is providing-
They are providing services.
Everything. They will provide everything that is hospiced.
I know there's one in Rutland. Where's the next closest?
We, we, Bayada will provide. It, it may be a while because they're strapped for, for staff as well, but it, but you can get services from Bayada. But what they do, again, is not really what I do and we often work together. So it's not like it's one or the other. And again, my patients are not paying, so it doesn't have any, any impact on what they bill for.
Well, after I make a motion, we get to discuss it. So just wait a second, I make a motion.
All right, great.
See if it gets seconded.
Okay.
Because my motion would be that we're not sending, I know we're not sending, there's no, there's no reason to send money to Vermont Nursing Association when they're not providing us with any services, even though it was a line item. Because it's a line item, I don't think we can actually move that over to Regina's organization, but we can send her the same amount from our general fund because that amount on the line item isn't going to be spent. So that would be my motion to-
How much is it?
Thirteen hundred and fifty dollars.
Yes. You know, it's not a lot of money.
Well, it's a start.
So I made that motion?
I second.
Okay. Motion been made and seconded. Is there any other discussion?
A little discussion. I'm just wondering why, since some of the people that you assist must have either medical coverage or Medicaid or Medicare or something, why don't you go-
I know where you're going with that.
I'm just asking why don't you go through and help?
Because it's in-
Too much?
It's completely like complicated and overbearing and I don't have any staff. It's Kathy, ten hours a week, and me, probably fifteen hours a week. I don't care whether it's Saturday or Sunday.
Okay, yeah, no, just kind of one you're doing.
They don't, you know, I can't bill the state.
Yeah.
I don't, I don't want to do that.
So then it'll get, then it'll get into wages and every, oh.
Who knows?
And people do ask that. "Can you bill my insurance?" And I, I just don't want to be controlled by the money aspect of it.
Well, you're not billing, you're not charging them, so.
Yeah, so don't stuff money inside of my bag.
So is there any other-
But people can, people can stuff money in the side of your bag, though.
Yes, they can, but we try not to-
You take donations, you just don't-
Yeah, we do, but we try not to do that.
Okay. Is there any other comments or suggestions on this? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye. Thank you for your service.
Thank you Regina.
Keep the card, call if you need it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Hopefully not Regina, nothing personal, but hopefully-
Is that your, is that your pad?
No, it is not.
Okay.
Hopefully not calling me.
Okay. Are there any other public that want to comment on something that isn't on the agenda?
Pretty much, I don't know.
Okay. So Green Mountain National Forest presentation.
Come on down.
What do we got tonight? Come on up.
Y'all still have jobs?
Come on up.
Yeah.
Yes.
No, they're selling off seventy-five percent of our town, which is National Forest.
Then who is?
It's only fifty, no, no, that's a joke.
The administration.
Are we seventy-five percent National Forest?
No, fifty-one percent.
Fifty-one.
I, I've, I've asked that question several years and haven't, because I know you guys would have the thing.
You must have an accurate number.
Yeah, the latest number we have is fifteen thousand nine hundred and ten acres, so whatever I guess we have.
I, I'm pretty sure it comes out to fifty or fifty-one percent.
It's a significant portion.
Not as much as Woodford. I think, I think you're eighty percent in Woodford.
Yeah, I don't have the percents and, but we're, if, once the small, the Pinnacle Lodge comes through, that'll be plus or minus eleven point six acres.
So what's happened, you know, to Pinnacle?
The, that's part of the-
You mean Forest Lodge?
The, the-
Caddah.
That's Forest Lodge.
Small tract act is the, yeah, the septic area is going to be, come part of Pinnacle Lodge.
Need it to hurt.
Yeah. So it's going to go back to control.
Okay, so that's going to come out of your, in your-
Yeah, so that eleven acres isn't going to change it. Fifty-one percent very much, but hey, every little bit counts.
That should, that should happen later this year.
Oh, that's still in process.
Oh, yeah, oh my goodness, it's going to, a long time coming, these things take years.
Yeah.
But yes.
Yeah.
But anyway, no kidding. We're here just to give a brief update. Got, yeah, Stacy Surrattan and I'm Martina Barnes. We, yeah, you've seen us before. Just wanted to give a brief update on some of the activities happening on the National Forest in Winhall. And if you have specific questions related to timber activities, we don't have any currently in Winhall, but yeah.
We have, we have some in Winhall, but they're not active.
Active, okay. They're not, yeah, but I don't know if I'm-
You just recently did the, like, French Chalo.
Should we stand over there?
Yeah, we put it over there, I'm not sure it's, uh-
That's your other map.
Visible. Yeah. Oh, yeah, there we go.
You could clip it right under the picture.
I mean, you're, you can probably hold it, but still, it's not-
And we'll leave it, we'll leave it with you.
Yeah, use the big clip, you should have, we got plenty of clips. Maybe they don't work.
The one in the middle does.
I was going to say, maybe it's a three-party system.
Yeah.
There we go.
Those two, look at them. Oh, these are on top of it.
Yeah, we've got the, so, yeah, so we're just here to give an update and answer any questions you have, but there's, the red areas here show areas that are being planned for prescribed or prescribed fire, which some people also call controlled burning, but are Forest Service. Just today, actually, we did a small area at Mount Tabor, so as-
I got, I got notification of that one.
Okay.
Am I going to get notification of these in our town?
Yes.
Because we did it last year.
I know, I know, I know.
We went through that.
Apologies for that, but hopefully we got that squared away, there's-
I'm at least on the list now.
Well, it helps for the fire department to know.
Well, just so I don't have to go running when we get a report of all of them.
Right, right. So, so yes, so we've got some plans, but you will definitely get the notification if not, hopefully the day you-
What's that, French Chalo, is that where?
Yeah, French Chalo and, yeah.
So it's where you recently cut? You're just gonna, the, the remnants are going to get piled and burned?
Well, there's some wildlife openings on French Chalo that are going to be burned every five to seven years to keep them in open status.
Exactly, exactly. So that's the primary, those are some of the primary objectives.
I mean, what's the ones over to upper right?
Upper right, is that the, are those?
That's in the corner of, that says Snow Valley Road and the eleven thirty.
Snow Valley, yeah.
Not eleven thirty, I mean, uh-
So is that, is, is that near the, near the high point of, of Route thirty? Is that the amount between Snow, Snow Valley Road and, and Route eleven?
Well, it's thirty.
I think, I think that is like the, like that, there's like a spruce stand right next to the road at the high point on thirty. Yeah, I think that's what that is. There's a couple along in the back. I think there's a field in the back and then there's one in the front that get burned.
What's that one all the way up? On the right hand, in the right-hand corner, those two are-
That's on Spring Creek Road.
What?
Isn't that up towards Spring Creek?
We have, we give them names, like one is called Apple Orchard, one which is, you know, one is called Kong.
So what's, what's the road that crosses right through the very ridge?
What's Spring Creek? Spring Hill Road?
Spring Hill, sorry.
Spring Hill Road?
This is up near Waltz Camp Road.
Okay, that's, that's up near Waltz Camp.
Spring, Spring Hill.
Yeah, we call it the orchard, you know, it's an old-
Spring Hill Road, uh, Spring, uh, Waltz Camp Road wouldn't be near Spring Hill Road.
Oh, I know Waltz Camp, is that where that is?
Yeah.
Waltz Camp, okay.
So that's, that's near the town line.
Okay.
Yeah.
And I think it's, you know, that gets burned quite often, it's a pretty big field out there.
It's not a recent cut, it's just a regular burn?
No, I, yeah, I don't think it's recent. I think, I've been here for ten years and it was cut just before I got here. It was part of, you know, the project here was, was at Nordic, was the name of the project in these areas.
Okay. So are there any, are there any-
New cuts?
New cuts, but are there any more land acquisitions that you're planning at this time?
This one right there.
The one that's, the one that you probably were, it's, but no, I mean, it's besides that-
That's Forest Lodge is what we used to call it.
Yeah, surrounded by forests, yeah. And that one got funded in, in last federal fiscal year and it's, yeah, right-
Oh, that's, that's the Prospect Rock.
That's the one Prospect Rock, that's the one, it's, yeah, we're working with the Conservation Fund. This is the one that's, it's surrounded by Forest Service.
But that's in Winhall?
It is in Winhall.
You get there, you get there, you get there through Manchester though, right?
Yeah.
You get that through, uh-
Yes, exactly. Up that, it's a town road, is it the-
So that's, that's in process?
Yes, with the Conservation Fund.
So, okay, because we've mentioned before that you guys keep acquiring much more land, we're going to ask for some more Kendall Farm. Okay? We've, we've done that before and it's-
Traded it out.
And it is a, a thing because technically you're supposed to get permission from the town to acquire more land in the town of Winhall, is that right?
Yeah, no, I believe, I mean, the Conservation Fund go, I mean, I don't, I can't find out, but I'm, it's my understanding they, this was, was done that you guys, you're saying you didn't approve that.
Well, I've only been, I've only been in office for ten years now.
I've been sixteen and I did not know.
And I hadn't heard anything about it.
That's okay.
There would be kind of a-
Sally Manickian with the Conservation Fund didn't come.
Haven't heard a word. But that's why I was asking if there was any land acquisition.
Julie's been here eight, eight years.
Yeah, that would be a-
It was recently acquired when Snow Valley was dispersing land, that was one of their parcels. So it was in the last couple of years that that was acquired.
Uh-huh. Okay, first, first I've heard of it. Now what about the other green box up there in the, right in the center?
Oh, that's one of the Pinnacle Lodge that I mentioned.
Okay, that's a pinnacle, that's eleven acres.
Yeah.
All right, this is, I'm, I'm a little, okay.
Yeah, just for reference, it's not National Forest, but I mean, I, it was years ago, but I worked with the Greens and, and across the street and that land is all state bars.
That's correct.
They donated it all together, deduction to preserve the land, so, you know, fifty-one percent.
Correct.
There's a lot of acreage under state bars.
But yeah, um, yeah, I'm, I'm surprised we hadn't heard something more about that. But anyways, we'll, we'll talk, we'll do some research on that and just, we'll, we'll talk later. We know how to get all the information.
That's why we're glad to come every year. Before it happens.
But I hadn't, I hadn't, I was wondering because I know quite often there's, like down on Manchester Mountain, there were some people that were contiguous to the Green Mountain National Forest's holdings and were considering selling their property to Green Mountain National Forest. And I don't think anything happened with it, whether the-
Right, yeah, not in the last couple of years.
Correct.
Is it an actual sale? But usually it's sort of a donation with a tax write-off.
It may, I don't know the, because it's not yet part of the National Forest, I don't know the particulars. I'll find out.
So it's still, so it is not happened yet?
It's not close, it has not happened yet.
Okay. So if you could give us a little more information?
Yeah, definitely.
Because I don't, I don't think we have been privy to that. Not that it's going to make a big difference, but technically-
No, we do with, with them-
We're supposed to give permission, the town is supposed to give permission to do it.
Land and water, unless it's a donation, the land and water Conservation Fund is, you know, the source of the funding for these acquisitions.
Hmm, that doesn't make any difference.
Right.
I believe. It's, I don't believe that's how you acquire it. It's if you require, acquire it-
Right.
For the holders.
We like to, yeah.
So that's surrounded, is all the green, Green Mountain National Forest?
It's all, it is.
Okay. So it's in the middle.
It makes, it makes sense.
Yeah, it does.
Usually we weren't notified and we have to, we usually acquiesce to it or make some concession if there's-
We have to agree that it's, which is probably the best thing, but it just is nice to know if you're acquiring more, suddenly that you get up sixty percent.
Right.
Is there a structure on it?
I don't think so.
Okay.
No, there's not.
Okay, cool.
So that's that.
So you got any big timber projects this year?
No, just the-
Are you doing the one by the scenic overlook on the other side of the road? By, at the top of the, at, just down from the Long Trail parking lot? Or are you all done with that section that you done?
We're, we're done with that section, you know, right where the snowmobile-
The snowmobile car goes up, yeah.
That's all done, you know, those units are done, but we still have three cutting units off Shandolin Road. And we still have a little bit left more just past, you know, was it east of Pinnacle Lodge, you know, there's that road, you know, that goes out to the, to the, through the north there, to the power line.
You, you mean partway out.
Yeah, partway out, yeah, so there's, yeah, so there's still some-
So are you guys going to cut that timber that's in that real bony section as you're coming down?
No, 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 not, not, no, not that, all that oak, we stayed out of there.
Jesus, nice looking stuff.
I know, well, I can just imagine when those boulders rolling down on the thirty and eleven and, and, you know, what we do find is that, you know, first of all, it's too steep for us to operate and, you know, we try to keep all of that reason, but what we did find a little bit when I did some, you know, before we started sale, I tried to cut some trees down to see what it looks like inside and that kind of helps me, you know, measure the trees and, and do the defect, is that a lot of these oak had like some round holes in the middle of them.
It's a tough area.
Yeah.
And it would be, I mean, there's nothing that's impossible.
Yeah.
It's just not practical.
It's just, there's a lot of-
But it still looks, it still looks good from the outside.
It does, it does, yeah, but, you know, we got a sell and it's, it's too steep and, you know, we, we can't cut everything. You know, that might be a future project or something, but right now we just cut all around it. But we do have Shandolin Road left with probably at least a winter left in there if not-
That's, that's off of-
Bromley Forest.
Bromley Forest.
And, and then the other one-
That common, common problem there.
But it worked out good this year. You know, we had a good winter, the person just, you know, it was a small operator with a, a cable skidder and a chainsaw and it's like, that works great till you get six feet of snow. And so he just wasn't able to, you know, it's a small landing and there's all kinds of things in there, but it's a, so they've been getting extensions either through us because of weather or the last administration gave several extensions because of, you know, weather, you know, that we're not part of the contract. And then, you know, we also have to consider like the producer price index and the consumer price index. And there's, you know, sometimes when that hits a certain level, well, then there's an extension generated by that. So, so Sossimo was the owner of that sale, the other purchaser, and they really, they've been trying hard to get it cut. It's just, I think Hunter Excavation was actually going to do some of it this winter, but he was down in Reedsboro cutting another sale that he owned.
That he was about to be done. That he was about to be done.
He was way behind on that. But he got it all done, all two hundred, like four acres or whatever it was, but little Dutch hill.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Ski area sale.
Okay.
So, yeah, that, other than that, just recreation wise, we've got a few, a snowmobile bridge replacement on Order Seven, um, north of Ken, uh, that's, or the snowmobile, yeah, there, and then it, that's right here on Order Seven, and.
What we call High Bridge.
And then we have a, um, trail bridge replacement, um, north of Kendall Farm Road near the power line. Um, or is that the one that's, yeah.
I'm gonna, that little bridge or the bigger bridge?
No, it won't, it won't be the big bridge, that's, that's the one that goes across the, goes across the Wind Hall River, the IP Road.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
That's, that's adequate. So are you, how, why are you making these bridges? Because we have a problem getting some rescue equipment across some of these.
I know that we talked about this last year.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Because I know you're keeping them small so that vehicular.
Right, isn't.
Jeeps, et cetera.
Right, we're trying to avoid.
But the problem is, we don't wanna make it so small, I mean, I've got a four wheeler that will fit across them, but our bigger stuff, and even with elk tracks, won't fit across some of them now.
Right.
Which eliminates us from getting like two Stratton Pond.
Right, for some of the, like emergency.
Ask you.
Yeah.
Yeah, no.
So it just, if you could keep that in mind when you make them, I mean, I know you're trying to keep them to the width of a snowmobile, but, it's, it's pretty tight when, when they're trying to get a piece of equipment in there to get somebody else.
What's the width on that, fifty inches or fifty-four inches?
Um, probably fifty-four would be better, we have one of the tracks now.
Okay.
But it's not a side by side, it's a, it's, it's a straight.
Too long.
But it's not a side by side.
Okay, no.
Uh, we didn't go for any side by sides because they're just too big.
Yes.
We know we couldn't get those in there. Even though a lot of departments are going to side by sides now because of where we have to go. Matter of fact, we got a grant for some rescue equipment from the federal gov, well, through the state, but through the federal government, for some new rescue equipment, for Green Mountain National Forest in Bennington County. We were one of the few agencies that the PD got some funds and we got some funds for new equipment for responding in Green Mountain National Forest. And, uh, so now we, we've got modern equipment.
Right. Yeah, I'll, I'll check with our, uh, engineers about, you know, the width, but I think, yeah, I think it's, it's tough because it's like we're trying to. We, I hear you.
Well, but, but if you, I mean.
Gated, are you gated?
No.
Oh, it's not gated?
No, but the problem is, you're, you're, even at fifty-four to fifty-six inches, it's not big enough for a vehicle to get across.
Right, right.
But for our rescue equipment, because if we gotta get all the way into Stratton Pond, um, we're talking mile, mile and a half.
Right.
And if we have to look somebody out of there, we're talking many men.
Yeah, and, or, yeah.
And come. A lot of manpower. But, okay.
Great.
Yeah, so that's.
Now, we also got a key.
Yep.
From you for the gig, which I know it's not closed right now.
That's what I just said.
Well, that's, that's at the IP Road. Where it crosses Wind Hall River.
Right.
Where they do gate it off in the summer.
Yeah, I've been there, there's a game.
Just now for a snowmobile, even though it's getting.
Correct, so one of your.
Yep, one of our fire guys.
Brought it all over to us because, um.
Of course, I think, yeah.
Yeah, exactly. Um, so we may try to get a, some sort of a lockbox up there so we don't have to remember where it is, um, because.
That's a good idea.
Yeah, and have it, have it like our Knox boxes.
Yeah, just like.
And have it so that we have it available, but, uh, and hopefully we don't need to go in there, but if we do, time is of the essence.
So, yeah, well, hopefully, yeah, you'll be, we'll keep you informed on burning and, you know, and I'll let you know about that, the prospect rock land acquisition and what, um, was done there by the conservation fund, um, that's in their ownership now, uh, and laying out the bridge with.
Yeah, just gonna keep it in mind because it would, it would be, it would be advantageous to be able to get across them, because if we go in, a mile by machine and then everybody has to get off and walk another mile and then look somebody else that mile, it's a long, long time and a lot of manpower.
Okay.
Thank you.
Are you guys doing any work on the Velma Trail in Wind Hall?
Um.
I think you guys did a presentation last summer about the work that you were starting to do.
Which, which trail?
The Velma Trail, a mountain biking trail?
Yes, that, we're finishing up the, the NEPA, the environmental review for that, uh, currently, so we should, the plan is to, begin most likely laying out the trail, starting this summer and next summer, maybe starting construction in twenty-six and twenty-seven, so.
Is this like the same group that Jamaica was do, working with that was trying to do a trail, is that with the same system?
Yeah, they're, they're all sort of connected, but I, this one specific is a, is a, an equivalent of the Long Trail, but for mountain biking, or the Catamount Trail, but for mountain biking. And the Forest Service has an established route already picked out.
Yeah, exactly.
That doesn't go through Jamaica, so it's, that's a, I don't think.
Okay, because, because the Jamaica group was approaching us to do something with the Wind Hall Municipal Forest over in Jamaica.
Right.
To try to get it over into this area.
I think that's separate.
Okay.
Yeah.
That's them trying to make it more of a network of trails, but, but the one main trail which you guys are working on, I think comes up right through Wind Hall, not far from the Catamount Trail.
Yeah, usually, yeah, we're trying to follow more established, um, snowmobile routes or trails, there's not a lot of new trail construction with that proposal.
So this summer is taking an exact location of.
Exactly.
Trail, where they're gonna.
So the, um, I think most of, there won't be any new construction this year, it'll be next year and into twenty twenty-seven.
At one time, you had a program where, um, if there was ATV clubs on opposite sides of a county or whatever, you could gain access to the property that you had down in Bennington County at one time, and I heard that that got taken away, is that correct?
The, you mean the Supper, well, it's called Supper Pond Trail, that, yeah, we, yeah, currently, there's no ATV, um, no ATVs allowed on Supper Pond Trail until we work with, the town of Bennington, Woodford, and Stamford to just get a kind, a legal connection through the town and, uh, get the trail up to a.
So.
It's, it's really an issue about, well, a couple issues, but soil damage and water, it's a, a mud hole along sections of that trail, it's just not, um.
But it is something that is allowable if.
Yeah.
That we meet certain requirements.
Well, yes and no, it would need to, it's, it's quite a, um, I mean, the short answer is, I guess, yes, event, perhaps, if, but it would have to go through a pretty extensive environmental review, maybe even a, forest plan, like amendment, if it's an area that isn't currently designated for ATV use, so.
Well, which, which none of the.
Exactly.
Green Mountain National Forest in town of Wind Hall is designated.
It is not, exactly.
There's management areas, oh, there's like diverse forest uses, you know, we just, we ma, we manage areas, different areas, like if this is all diverse forest use, then ATVs could be.
Could be, right.
Considered, but if it was like remote backcountry, no. It's just, uh, so we just have to look, so wherever you proposed it, we would have to look to see what the management objectives are for that land area. And if it was something that like, no, we're trying to manage for low impact, low, you know, people not seeing a lot of people out there or things like that, no, but, if it was diverse forest use, which a lot of Wind Hall is, then it could be considered, but we'd have to look to see where you were proposing it.
Well, I don't think we would try to propose a spot out through the wilderness, I think would.
No, but I mean.
You know, affect an established trail.
Yeah, exactly, there's a lot around here, so I think most of here is diverse forest use, which means, you know, hiking and, and horses and, you know, could be ATV use, but it's, it's made, it's designed.
It's a, it's a process.
Yeah.
It is not.
It's not, yeah.
So we just need to know a route that's being proposed, if there is one, and then we'd have to work with the management of that area.
Okay, so there's a possibility.
I see a question, yeah.
Sorry.
Yeah, thank you, um, just a, a question, so a lot of the headwaters to the Wind Hall River fall within Green Mountain National Forest in Wind Hall. I'm just curious if you have, like, if any ways of assessing the status of those headwaters, um, and then, like, you know, do you do projects or do you have practices to kind of slow spread and sink that water, before it comes down into the town of Wind Hall, because obviously flooding continues to be a major concern for us, um, a lot of those headwaters are without, like, outside of the town's boundaries and more within the forest.
Um, that's a good question, I mean, I think our for, we definitely, our forest management practices are designed to be responsive to, like, to be, create more of a resilient landscape downstream to not, we're, you know, not doing clear cuts, we're do, the type of forest management.
Protect the riparian areas, you know, where they absorb, but, yeah, I mean, the most we do really in, in something like that is, is we work with Trout Unlimited, you know, to create trout habitat, but I, I don't know if we've done that in this area.
Well, the, the problem is when you, you have such a large area and it's mountainous, and the weather patterns seem to have been changing, when we get a, a microburst or whatever in an area and it, and it drops many inches of rain.
Right.
In, in several hours, it, it's, I mean, one of the best absorbers of, of all of the rain is all the trees, and this is almost all forested, I mean, you've got a few open areas in there, but not many. Cause I know there were brooks that when I was a kid flowed freely, and now they're dried up, and I think it's because of all the trees.
You mean sucking the water up or?
Mm-hmm, yeah, because suppo, supposedly a maple tree with a decent canopy takes a hundred gallons a day. So we used to be seventy-five percent, the state of Vermont used to be seventy-five percent clear, now it's seventy-five percent forested, or almost, it may not be exact figures, but.
It's always the bad time of year to get the storm, you know, like in the spring, cause the snow leaves transpire, as you know, it's like there's no water being sucked out.
Yeah, but we've had them in August when all the leaves are on the tree.
Once the leaves are on, and yeah, it's just a lot, it's just a lot of water, um, but, yeah, with a forest has about, you know, when we do a private area, I don't know. So we went into these areas, cause again, the Nordic Project, which I, I think there's still a link on our site too, um, you know, where we evaluated, I don't know how much is like is over on this side of the road. But we evaluate all that as part of that project, that's usually what we do, and that's also when we upsize like culverts, you know, like, instead of like being a hundred here flood level, now we're like, okay, we gotta put a twenty inch culvert in, you know, instead of like a, a sixteen. So that's usually when we do projects, we do all that work, but it's probably been assessed at some time or other. I just don't win.
And I can, if you, well, if you'd like, I can, um, they have my, the select board has my email, I can give you a little more information, and I can check with our, um, like our forest ecologist and, um, also our fish and wildlife staff, you know, describing some of the work that they do to, you know, just to create more resilient, like.
Yeah, I know like things like analog beaver dams are being, not, like, I don't know how often they're being used in the Green Mountain National Forest, but they seem to be like an effective way of, you know, if you can identify where, a lot of that water might be flowing from in some of these headwaters and providing a way to stop it, I was just curious if that's like at all within your house or if it's.
Totally, we do stuff like that and chop and drop, would chop and drop projects to create more of a natural, like, you know, environment in, um, rivers and streams.
Well, there, one of, I remember at least one of the major floods, there was a bunch of big beaver dams up there, and they all let loose because it just catapult, it just, it just went worse and worse and worse, so. Even though for the majority of the time it's holding back, now suddenly we've got a, several millions of gallons of water in an instant, and there's nothing you can do about that. Uh, but, but the beaver pond, I mean, the beavers are an amazing engineer, uh, but when it comes time to wash out, there's, there's no control in it, it's, uh, comes pretty fast and furious. But, okay.
Well, we'll let you get on with your meeting.
All right.
Thank you. Drive safely, I hope you're beating the storm, it doesn't seem to be here yet.
Well, once you get past the high point.
We have quite a bit on the agenda today, but that was excellent.
Thank you. Thanks. Chief.
Thank you guys, have a good night.
What, what do you got?
What, just that we have, uh, administrator interviews and they were set for certain times.
Okay, what time was it set for?
I think six and six thirty.
Was just coming in at five thirty, or whenever you have an open spot.
Oh, okay, so then he is here, so that's fine.
Okay, well, we'll.
No, no, let's go.
Let's breeze right through it.
Let's do it.
That's it.
Let's do it.
And thank you for supporting Regina's program as well, um, we do have a lot of isolated elderly, ill individuals in the area that struggle to find, you know, through, through our.
Somehow.
Traditional means, um, that we, we try to help out.
Incredibly unfortunate that the.
So anything we could do.
The Department Association dropped out of us and various towns in the area, it was unbelievable.
So anything special on?
They were incredible angels, I mean, they were just incredible.
Oh, absolutely.
Anything special on the list for?
Uh, I've got the arrest details there, um, nothing out of the ordinary, um, as far as the incidents that we dealt with this month, obviously starting to settle down a little bit as the mountain, uh, comes to an end for the year, um.
The alarms were false alarms or real alarms?
No, they're all false alarms.
All eleven were false alarms.
I mean, they're real alarms, but.
Yeah, but.
Somebody without a code or. Yeah, or a tractor, that kind of thing.
What about new officer?
Yeah, so we are in the final stages completing background investigation, and I think we'll have an answer within two weeks. Yeah, and, uh, which is in plenty of time for the August Academy to choose one.
A threat and harassment against an individual or against an officer?
That was an individual.
Against an individual?
Yeah, that was an arrest, yeah.
And intercepted.
And we also, we also had two people in custody due to intoxication levels.
The disorderly, oh, that's not disorderly.
Whatever, they weren't necessarily arrests.
We have a disorderly contact, is that the same as the drill harassment?
Yeah, that was an arrest, but it was a, uh, person that was intoxicated, yeah. And then, uh, just some other updates, uh, we do have a VR training, uh, platform now in the department, scenario based training that we can get right there in the office with multiple scenarios. Um, de-escalation, use of force, and, uh, very handy, and you guys are welcome, anybody's welcome to come, take a look at it, if you wanna get a crack at it, uh, really good stuff, made by Axon, the same, same, uh, producer of our cameras and our, our tasers, you know, so very.
There was just a story about them.
Yeah.
On.
Positive. I'd love to check it out.
Awesome, Julie.
We had new radar installed using, uh, funding from Governor's Highway Safety Grant, uh, also funded some training, uh, from March, uh, at the Lifesavers Conference, uh, the two of us attended, and, uh, new hires, we also had a in-service training, EMS in-service training, which included the officers and our EMS volun, EMS volunteers, uh, over at the legendary Rescue Building, uh, which included some protocol updates for the year of the state of Vermont, and we also did some, uh, childbirth, uh, simulation, uh, with a, ad mannequin that they have loaned out from the state of Vermont, which was.
So all of our offices are UMTs now?
All of our full-time officers are UMTs.
Okay.
Yeah, we have some per UMT officers, two of them are now.
But it at least got to be its first day.
Yeah, yeah, we have to have CPR first day.
Yeah, okay.
And, yeah, that's, uh, that's my updates.
Any questions?
No.
Okay, so other than that, your, all your equipment's all set and could check.
Snowmobile's are good.
They survived?
Fine, yeah.
Okay, good. I wasn't sure where they were going or not.
What happened?
Uh, when we used them for the plane crash.
Oh.
It was a tough, a tough.
Yeah, I can imagine.
And those machines aren't really made for that type of.
That was the luckiest family of all time.
I told them they should buy a lottery ticket.
No, yeah, scary stuff.
Yeah. Okay, thanks, chief.
Thank you so much.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right, do we, so do we have a person here for an interview for the short-term rental?
We do.
Yes.
Okay, should we, uh, go, do, do we wanna do any of these other things first?
The Code of Ethics ordinance, we've already, we, we had it as an agenda item on the nineteenth, the last meeting, at this meeting, just to, you know, if you've read it, if we can approve it, it has to be at the regular or special meeting, but it's here at this meeting, so that we can do, it's a process, to get the ordinance in place, so the next thing is to have.
Okay, have you folks read?
I did, I did many times.
Okay, do you, uh, have any problems with it?
No.
No issue.
Make a motion.
Beth?
Yes.
You have read this, and that doesn't put us in.
No, I mean, it's perfectly fine, it just basically tells a person if they have a problem, that basically how to go about.
Yeah, this is VLCT's.
Filing a complaint.
Code of Ethics Investigation Enforcement Ordinance.
So can I get a motion on that?
Make a motion.
I'll second it.
Okay, motion made and seconded to approve the, uh, Code of Ethics Investigation Enforcement Ordinance, if there's no other discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Actually, and then it has to be on the minutes approved, and that won't be till the next meeting, that's such a process. Yeah, that's quite a process.
Should we?
Hey, Jules.
Skip that for just a, I think, uh, this other stuff's all gonna take fairly quickly, or do you wanna stop?
I think we're good, we just need to remember that we have to close the meeting and do liquor board.
Yeah, um.
Well, we can do that very quickly.
Beth, you've got, uh, liquor board?
One.
I have two.
Two.
Two?
Right.
Okay, motion to close the, uh, suspend, recess at six fifteen to open the liquor board.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye. So I have, um, the Stratton Corporation for Green Apron for the outside consumption permit, we had approved all the other permits for them at the last meeting, they just forgot to submit this one. So I followed up with them to make sure they had it in place.
Make a motion.
Well, okay, what's the other one?
The, excuse me, the other one is Wind Hall Market, and that's a second class license.
Okay.
And this is their annual license.
Can we just make a motion both of them?
Oh, you make a, yeah, motion to approve the Green Mountain, uh, I mean, the.
Green Apron.
Green Apron, the Green Apron Outdoor Consumption License and the, uh, Wind Hall, uh, Markets, uh, secondary.
Yeah, okay, pardon for those, chief, thank you. Okay, motion made and seconded to approve these two, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Do you want my other stuff really quick, or no?
What else you got?
What do you got?
So I have.
Well, let's make a motion to close the liquor board, if we're done.
We are done.
You're done with the liquor board?
Six sixteen, close the liquor board.
Close the liquor board.
That was a quick drink, yeah.
Okay, so I have two proclamations here, one for Alexander, one for myself, um, for the fifty-sixth Annual Professional Municipal Clerks Week, which is May fourth through the tenth. So they just need your signature to store it, if you're willing to do that.
What is the proclamation?
Just that you're acknowledging us as municipal clerks and our continued education.
I'll put it to that.
I'll hand those right to you, this, yeah, it's a proclamation.
So, what, do, do we need to authorize Stuart to do it, or Stuart just does it?
You can authorize, I mean, whatever you wanna do.
I'd move that we, uh, authorize Stuart to approve.
I'll hold my signature to it.
Approve the author, approve the proclamation.
Motion made and seconded.
Both Beth and Alex.
Any other discussion?
No.
All in favor say aye.
All right, now you can sign it.
Okay, there's one, you can even read it, I think.
It doesn't even have a date, lucky.
It does, I put it on there.
Oh, it's at the top?
Yeah. Well, the date of the Municipal Clerks Week is at the top, but then April fourth is at the, or third is at the bottom.
So.
Uh, the last thing I have is.
They go second, but that's today.
Second, yeah, so.
Do you wanna stand up too?
Uh, so I just.
Hold it, Alex got some.
At the last meeting, we talked about, uh, going over some stuff that had to do with the upcoming special election, so I have some stuff on that at some point, whenever you guys wanna.
Is it okay if we hold off a few minutes on that?
Henry, you're, you're not leaving, are you?
You got a few minutes, okay, thank you.
Yes.
So the last thing is the two cemetery signs with the nine-one-one numbers and the new directional sign down here, um, the only thing I added to the directional sign is highway garage because, all of Trevor's delivery trucks miss the turn and they end up here, so, um, we thought that that would be a good idea, this is what the three signs look like.
Does it say transfers? It does.
It does, yeah.
Yeah, so I added the highway.
Where would it be as opposed?
Right where it is now.
Right where it is.
It's just that that one's falling apart.
Oh.
Yeah, it started to close.
You'd ask Trevor to get a price, but since I was doing other signs, um, and he hasn't got a response, I.
Who's standing next to it?
That shoe store with your suit on.
It looks like Walt Disney.
I don't have a brown suit.
So I've, I've motioned to approve the, uh.
Do you wanna know the price?
The signs for.
So the two cemetery signs are six ninety-six with insulate, installation.
Yeah.
And then eight sixty-eight for the two-sided sign, the directional sign.
Great.
Who's doing this?
Uh, Frank Signs in Manchester.
And that's.
He actually did the original.
Both of these are installation, with installation.
Yeah, all three.
So I, I motioned to approve the signs and the expense to fix them, and.
That's Walt.
It's Walt.
Okay, uh, you made a motion, did you second, motion been made and seconded to, uh, approve the purchase of these signs, is there any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
All right.
Great, thank you very much, that's all I have for you.
Thanks, Beth. We'll be with you in a little bit, Alex.
Yeah, that's fine, whatever.
All right, do we, um.
So we should do a short-term rental administrator interview, right?
Yeah, so we're gonna have to have a.
So we're gonna motion to go into executive session for personnel matter?
A second.
Motion made and seconded to go into executive session for the short-term rental administrator interview. I guess we just have the, we have just one applicant here at this point.
Right.
The next one's coming in as soon as.
In a little while, okay.
Right.
Alright, so it'll be just a few minutes, hope this shouldn't take very long.
You're welcome.
Thanks.
Who's that?
You got that shut off, it's added later time. Okay.
Yeah, so no decisions.
No decisions were made, these were interviews.
Interviews.
So now we're gonna, so now we're gonna move on to public safety facility. I had a conversation with Goldstone, is that Goldstone?
Yes, Goldstone, what they said.
And they agreed that there, that there is a possibility that we talk to a engineer about the. Fluvial flood zone.
Having.
And he said that there, there are situations where they look at it by a trained professional that assesses the floodways.
Right, that's what we came up with at the last meeting.
Right, but we didn't really make, and I, they're gonna get us some prices.
Some names, named the prices, right?
They're gonna, they're gonna get.
Did we lose Hannah? Did we lose Hannah? She's our fluvial.
I'm sorry?
Yes, you lost Hannah.
We lost Hannah.
Well, anyways, we're, we have not done anything, they're gonna get back to us with prices and names of qualified people of at least two. And we, we talked over some names.
Oh, good.
That are available, or, or that are, that are, have the expertise to do this.
Well, that, that's what, that's what we.
And, and we will, then we will bring it up at the next meeting.
Okay.
And then hopefully we can make a decision as to whether we talk about that or not.
Cause apparently the other option is having to, I mean. You can keep the, from what I understand, and again, I mean that's Hannah knows this stuff better than anyone, is, is to go up in that building and then maybe.
Well.
Build out this building too, I mean, who knows?
We don't know at this point until we get to that.
I thought I shut that off.
I'm gonna have to say, is that, the other thing is that the proposal for the new bill, I mean, nine, ten million dollars, I have to tell you.
I think that, I think that has to be.
There has to be another way.
Well, the, the problem is, we had so many plans, we had so many plans that night, and it was overwhelming, and I think we have to narrow it down. But we gotta answer this question first before we make.
Yeah, no, we can't do an improvement on that side.
So, that's, that's what I have to report on a public safety facility. Okay, so we will, I will advise when we have more information. Okay, Housing Committee.
We had a meeting, minutes have been posted.
Didn't see the minutes.
Or.
Oh, I got them from the ET.
Okay.
Oh, yeah, for the nada?
I didn't put them up.
Oh, okay.
Um, so, yes, I have some calls to make, we are talking, you know, the pinnacle property. That, I mean.
It's pinnacle now.
Yeah, like the acquisition of that land, that could be, I mean, that's a huge septic capacity up there. So, we're gonna tour that.
Well, we have the two-hundred-seat restaurant that's not there anymore, so that's part of what's available.
That was two-hundred seats?
Yep.
Yeah, I got that from Julie.
Really? I didn't realize it was that big that day at Burn, but anyways, okay.
So anyway, we've got things, we're talking to different people and, you know, trying to get something kicking.
Alright, so that's all we have to report on at this time. Okay, tax sale. Debbie?
Yep.
So I reached out to Kevin O'Toole, and we did the demand letters and the, which, he gave him thirty days to set up a payment plan. And so the thirty days has passed, and he came and started the process today. And so there's six properties that we're moving forward with, and it looks like the tax sale will be in May. So there are some properties that, as you've seen in the liquid tax, that haven't paid for like eleven, eleven years.
So there are three prob, I ended up, I came in when Kevin was here. And talked a little bit about some of the stuff that was going on. And he says there are three of them, that this will be the last time he will run them as a tax sale. Because there're nothing, there's been no movement on them, nobody has even offered a, to buy them at tax sale or has shown any interest. And he says, he says, I just get reimbursed for my expenses. He says, I will do them this year, but this will be the last time I do them if we don't make a move on to do something.
I, I was here, I was here probably a different time than you, but I was here.
Cause you weren't here.
Cause I was here when Kevin was here, and, and he was trying to impress upon me that we should buy them. And we should, we should take them at tax sale if they're not bought, so that he doesn't have to keep putting them up for years and years when they don't, when nothing happens. And, you know, my response was that, yeah, the problem with towns buying property, and he knows this, cause he's the one who pointed the statute, the case law out to us the last time. That we took properties at tax sale, and we did septic work on it thinking, oh, hey, the town can make some money, town is not allowed to make money.
They can only deduct their cost.
Right, and only, and we did, so we got back the septic, and we were able to sell it for what we had in it, but, so that ended up being okay-ish. But it wasn't what I had thought originally, cause I wasn't aware of the case law on it, something Kevin.
So, those three properties are the one on Chickadee. And the one on Winhall Woods.
Yep.
And one in.
Stratton Gardens.
Stratton Gardens.
Oh. In Stratton Gardens.
The one in Stratton Gardens is that one that, if I remember correctly, the septic system, you had to bring it up, what, two lots or something?
It's a sixty thousand dollar septic system, Richard Montag bought it when he bought all the remaining lots in Stratton Gardens. He sold all the viable lots, and this is the one that wouldn't sell, couldn't sell, and he just walked away from it.
So it has a design system, he's, it has a design system for it, cause everything in there did.
Yeah.
So it has, but it's an expensive system.
But it should be, a neighbor should pick that up.
But, you had a call from an adjoining, that might be interested in it.
Well, also, that's the other thing, we were, we reached out, did you reach out to a joint, cause we were told specifically you are allowed, we are as a town allowed to reach out to adjoiners and say. Hey, why don't you pick this up for like a song and a dance, it's a joint to property.
Right, and so I was gonna do that, we have to set the date and do all of those.
But you got, you actually got a call from an adjoining already?
Uh, last year.
Oh, last year?
Yeah.
Okay.
Was it on that property, or?
Yeah, right, so. What is?
I mean, that's a high-end development, doesn't it?
Yeah, I know, I know, but if, if.
Yeah.
What are the taxes owed on it now? Do you know approximately?
Um, on Stratton Gardens? Sixteen, sixteen thousand.
Yeah, so I mean, an adjoining in that development.
So if an adjoining.
That's a great idea for somebody who lives.
Now, the one on Chickadee is five, five thousand, six thousand?
That one is, yeah, twenty-six hundred.
Twenty, twenty-six hundred?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, and then the one on Winhall Woods is twenty-five thousand?
Twenty-five thousand, so that's, yeah, that one.
That's gonna be a tough sell because that's got a shared well.
And a half a acre.
And, and, and there's no reason an adjoining would want, they can't put a garage, and I looked at that on maps, that's a very tough one.
Now, the only other thing is, if we acquire the property, we're not paying twenty-six thousand dollars. Right now, we're not getting twenty-five thousand dollars in tax revenue.
Right.
And I know that other people here have the feeling of not to acquire, but, but just hear me out for a second. Is if we do acquire it and put it on the market for whatever we can get out of it. It's not like we paid twenty-five thousand for, we got twenty-five thousand, we haven't been paid for back taxes to it.
Right.
And.
Well, we do effectively pay twenty-five thousand then, but we don't pay, we're not putting money.
We, we, we don't, we don't take money out of the treasury.
It doesn't come out of the budget, right, it doesn't come out of the budget.
And put it into someone's hand.
So we could get something, is what you're saying.
And maybe get it back on the tax rolls, because right now, it is not gonna happen, cause nobody's gonna buy twenty-five thousand rolls.
And Kevin will not do it again, is the thing, he's tired of it, it's not working.
Beth, I know, you, I, I, I know your feeling on it, and I'd just as soon hear it again.
Let's hear it.
Yeah, so the last time you guys bought properties, you got one up on Benson Fuller that luckily a neighbor came and wanted to buy it, because that was not gonna ever sell on its own. And we would've been stuck with that.
The last time with Lower Taylor Hill, two lots.
We had the two lots on Lower Taylor Hill.
But those were given to us, weren't they?
What's that?
Weren't those?
You sold those to Travis Dawson.
No, but weren't those?
No.
Those were Ellen Vale's relatives.
Right, but didn't they say, take them, I mean, they, it wasn't in a tax sale?
No, it was a tax sale.
It was, I'm sorry, I apologize.
Bruce Chapman, Bruce Chapman all them.
Yep.
And we took them at tax sale, and then we did septic work, cause I thought.
That we could make money on it.
That we would be able to sell them at a proper, what's the other, two lots on Lower Taylor Road, until Kevin told me about the case law that says.
You can't.
Towns aren't allowed to, we could sell them, but we could make money on it.
You can only take your expenses out.
It's ridiculous, but that worked out, it worked out anyway, cause Travis bought them and, for protection, and he's happy.
Right, so if you guys were thinking about buying these, we should first, like the Powell Mary one, we should abate the penalty and interest so that Kevin, cause I believe Kevin gets a. Interest of what we sell it for, right Debbie?
No, just on the principal.
Okay, okay.
He does this fee is based on the principal.
Okay, not on the sale amount, okay.
Yeah.
So you're saying this is moving forward for a May tax sale, is that what you said?
May, yep. So if, if we're interested in doing that, having the option for us to purchase it at the end, it would need to be voted on by the select board.
But we don't have to do that at this meeting?
We don't have to do that tonight.
No.
But at least that would give us a little more chance to think about it.
Yeah.
And, and the, and the, and the only, I mean, I'm not, I'm just saying, it's, it, it won't go to a tax sale, at least by Kevin, because he said, listen. I'm just putting out my time, but I'm not, I'm only getting paid for my time. So he, he would get, how much would he make on like the twenty-six hundred dollar one? Do you know, off the top of your head?
Well, he does them all at once, so that it's a one.
Right, but I'm, but I, so, so he, it's not like he's making big money on it. It's just that he's, he says, I'm getting sick of doing the same work, and I'm charging my, my time and my printing, et cetera, and nothing's happening. Let's move and let's get something done, because there's just no point in keep doing them.
Right, and the, and the price is getting, you know.
Yeah, we haven't done it since I've been on the board, so that's over six years.
Well, actually Debbie has, has fixed some of the problems, she's contacted most of the people, and some of the people have worked out a payment arrangement, correct?
Yes, yep.
Yeah, that's, that's the catch me now right there, I mean.
So we had a tax sale about three years ago.
How did I miss that?
I, I don't know, but we did with Kevin O'Toole, and that's when he made some serious errors.
So that's the Isaiah Slate property?
On the one.
Isaiah Slate off of.
On Snowflake, it was the one on Snowflake.
That the hundred thousand dollar lien was on.
And he didn't catch it.
He did not catch it, Al caught it. The other thing is that before you, before we go to tax sale, I, I think you should reach out to the butters and try to get them to buy it. Before you guys buy it.
Right, right, which I will, it's like that I have to have the information and stuff, so, but I'll gather all of that so that I can go out immediately.
Sure.
Okay, so.
So we'll.
We're, are we advising, we're asking Debbie to reach out to the butters?
So, I mean, the only, the only question I'm, well.
I'm sorry, Alex had, Alex had his.
No, that was, all I was gonna say was that we did, we did have that tax sale a couple years ago.
Okay, sorry.
So the, the reaching out to a butters issue is that, you know, like the one.
That's not gonna clear it up, because they're not gonna be able to buy it.
They're not gonna buy it for the amount that the taxes are owed.
From the owner, because.
They would have to go to the owner to buy it right now, and the owners.
Well, it would alert them to come to the tax sale, right? Like if I was in a butter, I could pick it up a property next door.
Yeah, totally, well, that's why I'm thinking for, certainly the, the garden.
Stratton.
Chickadee Lane one.
The Stratton Garden ones, for sure, I mean, it's probably a no-brainer for the, the adjoining to protect his property from another owner by buying this lot. And not having a house built.
Right, and these people that bought these properties, they don't live here, so they're not gonna see it in the Rutland Herald.
Right.
They're more than likely not going on the website unless they need a zoning permit or something.
Right, cause that's when, when last time that, last time Dana, last time Mrs. Davidson came here.
Debbie?
Debbie, I kept meaning Dana, like, not Dana, last time Debbie came in here, we said specifically, find out for sure if we can reach out to the adjoiners, and she did, and you can, so.
Yep.
That's, it's a great idea, like I said, I did look specifically at something like the Winhall Woods one, it doesn't, I mean, yeah. Maybe the guy wouldn't want somebody building a house next door, no one's done it three years, that's a small number anyway, but.
No, that's a big number, that's twenty-five thousand dollars.
Oh, that's the twenty-five thousand one, yeah, that's, that's not gonna fly away.
So, the, the thing is, the well that is on that property is for the house above it.
Yeah.
And that property there, so there's already one conflict, but, and probably as long as she owns that property, that's not gonna happen anyways.
Yeah, yeah, that, that's a tough one.
There's a property on the side.
There's one, I looked at one of the sites, see if maybe they can buy it for a garage or something, doesn't really work, they, that, it doesn't work.
Okay, so, I guess, so can we ask Debbie to reach out to the butters on these properties and say, okay. This, these are coming up for tax sale.
Yeah.
And we are kinda hoping that you will be interested in, and. I think that these other two may fly at that, but I don't think at this one here.
I mean, the one on Chickadee has, what, five properties?
Five of butters, yeah, so, and those are all small lots, so it would definitely be beneficial to them.
How big is the lot?
Points five.
Yeah, so one of the butters is.
Van Buren.
Is Van Buren, who owns, who had been buying up the lots around them, I don't know if they want another lot, but, you know, that's certainly, certainly a good. I looked, it doesn't, it doesn't join all their other lots.
Yeah.
Okay, so if you would reach out to those people, thank you.
And how much is on that, that Chickadee Lane one?
Twenty-three? Yeah, twenty.
Yeah, that's like, that, that's another one, that's probably a no-brainer for them, maybe, I mean, I can't speak for them, but.
Right, okay, so we can try to make a decision by the next meeting, if, if you get some feedback for us.
Yeah.
Okay?
Feedback, meaning reaching out, start reaching out.
If, if you reach out to him, say, oh, yeah, well, okay, I didn't know about that, we, we, we may be, it, it doesn't mean you're gonna come.
Right.
And bid on it, but at least it would say whether there is.
Yeah, I'll give them the heads up that a date is coming up soon.
Okay, okay.
So that they can move forward with that stuff.
Alex, I'm sorry, I apologize.
I, we talked about this a little bit, but I forgot to ask this part, on Stratton Garden, is there association fees that go along with that?
Yeah.
Supposedly, Kevin said that the association fees do not multiply and carry over at this time. If it is sold, then it would start incurring HOA fees.
No one would have to pay back these.
That is what Kevin said today.
Okay.
That might be worth a phone call to Tammy Blancher to make sure that there's not a buildup over there.
Cause Homestead does maintain the roads and grounds, the, the other thing is that usually, you don't have an association fee until you build a house. Isn't usually an association fee, it's not always true.
That doesn't, I can speak from experience.
I know it's not always true, but.
Cause I bought two tax sales in Wadsworth.
Yeah.
And they kept trying to tag me for the HOA fees.
So usually, it's not, but calling Tammy is probably the best way to find out if there's any buildup. Is, is that something that you would do?
Yeah.
Thank you Debbie.
Thank you.
Is there anything else you have to bring before us tonight?
Um, I was just going to give you um the reserve funds.
Oh, perfect, thank you.
Thank you.
Um, I will bring the financials next month.
Okay, next, next month or next meeting?
Or next, next meeting.
Well, I'm I'm not trying to push you, I'm just saying, thank you.
Lisa just told me that last time we had a tax sale, it was just emailed to us. So thank you for bringing it to the meeting, so.
Okay, very good. So um, we also have, um, I was empowered to talk to Mr. Hunter.
Yes.
About Rogues Ridge and Moose Hollow Road. Uh, it just so happens Kevin O'Toole is his lawyer.
Yes, I spoke with Kevin about that.
He's trying to sell some lots over there now. He's trying to, but there are no permits going out.
He is selling lots, well, he's selling.
On Moose Hollow or Rogues Ridge?
Yes.
Yes, both.
Oh, oh, oh.
But, so we talked.
And he owns the road.
Literally. The the road is his property.
And he owns that little cut through that if, and I talked to Kevin briefly about this too, that he owns that little cut through that if.
Night, Chrissy.
Somebody did, night Chrissy, if somebody fixed that, then you could have, we talked about this, Moose Hollow to the right, Rogues Ridge to the left, everybody's happy again.
Hmm, that subject came up. We, Kevin got him on the phone because he had been talking with him last night. So I happened to come in and he was here, and I said, well, I had talked to Beth that we had to contact him, and I was sick last week, so I didn't get a chance to do it, but we spoke with with Mr. Hunter for a while, and he was not aware of everything that had happened there, and he had, we talked about possibly blocking the road at the breakpoint from where it was before, and having Rogues Ridge on one side and Moose Hollow on the other side. I mentioned the fact of possibly if all of the people in that area got together, they might be able to get the road built down through without anyone incurring a tremendous amount of money. Because it's already cut through, it's already been cleared, but it just.
Which road through? Do you mean the little?
The 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 road it would.
The one to Silver Ridge, the little connector.
Correct.
Yeah, that's the one. Oh, I I didn't, I didn't drive up to look.
Well, it is, it is, it was cut originally. It's grown in some, but it's, it's probably a hundred yards long.
Yes. Yeah, it's not very long, no, that's, that's.
So I mentioned that to him, and he said, well, that's interesting. So I said, and he said that Kevin is going to talk with Randy and Teresa about it because he knows them, they went to school together, and he's going to get back to me.
Well, he also, well, he represented Stoddard and a lot of the lots that Randy and Stoddard were working together to build it up.
So anyways, that's that's where those conversations went. It's not a definitive answer yet, but at least we have some conversation.
But it sounds like.
But don't they have to have, the blocked road, don't they have to have a cul-de-sac in it?
Yeah, so that's the problem with block, re-blocking the road. When it was there, it was not an issue for some reason, but the fact that it's out now and then to re-block, it doesn't really work, which is why that one little cut through is the way to make it work. No matter who we, the problem there was, you know, Randy saying, I'm not doing that because it doesn't increase the value of any of my lots. But meanwhile, he created, so maybe, you know, as I was about to say, I think at some point soon, we need to have a full, like.
Everyone involved.
Everyone involved and see, you know, I mean, if it's, if it's, and I did not drive up to look at it, but if it's as, not as big a deal as you're saying, and if Bob is okay with letting us improve it.
No, no, we're we're not improving it.
No, no, whether.
It's not, it's not gonna become a town road.
I'm saying if he's okay with letting it be approved, and we can get the people on Moose Hollow and Rogues Ridge who have been so.
They have to come to that agreement.
If they would've been so upset about it for so long, of who's changing whose name and blah blah blah, that's the answer. No one has to change their names.
If they were, if they were all willing to 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 get a price on it and possibly split this.
Heck, they could pay Randy.
So, but but that's, that's not our decision, because we're, it's really not our, I mean, we're trying to solve the problem.
No, no, but, but, but it's quite a bit nice to solve it. I mean, it's got.
It's gotta be solved.
Right, and that's the best solve, because you have Moose Hollow, no one changes their names, Rogues Ridge, everybody's happy.
Right, but.
Left, right, two signs, done deal, but that road would have to get in.
Right, except they're gonna have somebody, they would all have to.
Because Scott said that works for nine E nine one one.
Because it's got a right angle.
Right, it's, right.
Well, I have all the names that uh Doug got.
Yeah.
So anyways, I did talk to them, so I've done all I can for now. I'm waiting for feedback from Kevin O'Toole.
Okay, well, I guess we'll wait for that. Well, I'm just thinking that at some point, I think we should have them all come in, like we're voting before, but we put it on old.
Okay. Okay. Yeah, we may have to. So.
I don't think we should. I mean, it might be later, but.
Do we have, do you have any other stuff for us? Lisa, under new businesses, is there anything?
Oh, I have one quick thing, and and then.
You weren't, Lisa.
Yeah, but it has to do with Lisa, because, and I mentioned it to her downstairs before the meeting. So when I was at the uh housing committee meeting, which Hannah is a part of, um, she, you know, we were talking, she was going through the website and trying to get for cer- certain documents and information, and she's very good at it, but she was also having a little bit of trouble getting through it, and 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 it does get a little better the more you do it, but it's, you know, I've I've been online when there were bulletin boards. I mean, there wasn't even, there wasn't, it was bulletin boards, there wasn't even listserv, there was light, no listserv. Anyway, you know, and I have trouble with that website just getting information, and she said that this is something that she used to do or has the skill set in, and so I said, great, talk to Lisa about it, and I wish she was still here because she, I mean, but I'll, maybe Dean can ask you to make an appointment with Lisa, because she said, once she, if she can see, you know, Lisa has done an incredible job at putting this web thing together.
We thought we had hired the put together website.
Yeah, but she didn't know. It was Lisa putting it together, and 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 Hannah said that, you know, what, if she can see the backend of it, like how the thing functions, she might be able to make it more user friendly, and I think that would be a great thing. Um, you, I don't think you'd have any like.
No, no.
Like, I own this. You'd like, you'd like to turn it over to somebody, right?
Yeah, and I'm not saying.
Well, now the works like been done, I'm sorry.
I'm not saying turn it over to her, because you can't really do that, but but you can help make it more facile for everybody.
Literally what she used to do.
That's what she said.
Really?
And I said, great, so I I was actually a little surprised she hadn't reached out to Lisa yet, because she was very much like, yes, I'll do that.
When she was living in Canada, she worked for a company that did um usability projects for websites, so.
Yeah, this is what she said.
They were looking at like, they would track like people's cursors on the screen, like, what do people type, where do they move their cursor to?
I don't wanna remind you.
How like, how how are people using it, right? And then they would come in and they'd say, this is all the information we gathered about how people are using your system, and they'd reorganize it in a way that was intuitive to the people that were using it.
Right.
They'd be like, you know, twenty, twenty thousand people in your company nationwide looked for this file, but this file is buried seven layers deep, so you need to restructure it so that that file is at the top. Meanwhile, the file you have at the front page that you only need to click one button to get to, only seven people tried to find it all.
Right, so we won't have the, we won't have the the counter count, I don't believe, that that.
Is there?
But she just.
Is it available?
No, we don't need that. I don't think we need that. She said.
No.
But she just knows that.
She just has to look and see if it's a, if it's a type of system. She may not be able to help, but she did express.
Sounds like she probably could help.
I'm sure, I'm sure it couldn't hurt for her to look.
It couldn't hurt, that's exactly what I was.
Couldn't hurt for her to look.
Okay, just a second, Alex.
Uh, Peter has, Peter Strick, that applies for, who originally had also.
Yes, I know.
Put in a proposal.
And Peter's also very.
Yeah, he had also said that he could help with that if we needed to retool stuff.
Oh, because I, yeah, I took it, Peter, I I expressed regret that we didn't go with Peter, that's a lie.
But uh, yeah, I mean.
Because it would've been a lot simpler, but in in any event, I mean, yeah, Hannah, Peter, I mean, you know, um, I I I'm just saying Hannah, because she was here and she expressed that that is what she did, and that she has the background in it, so it made a lot of sense to me. And uh, so, I don't know, well, you know, Peter can take a look at it too. I don't think we have any ownership things about it. It's just whether or not, you know, it doesn't, it's not taking it away from Lisa, because, you know, when when Beth needs something uploaded, it's Lisa's the administrator that puts all the things on the website, you know, and when we need, you know, when the ordinance is and everything, I mean, Lisa's the one.
Just to meet like the open meeting.
But just to, just to change the way it functions, if that's, if if it's even possible. I mean, Hannah's answer was, I have to look at it.
You have to see the, you have to see the gears.
I have to be. Yeah.
I'll mention it to her, I'll bring it in touch.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Okay, thank you, okay?
Thank you. That's all I had on the website, new business. Access permits, you know?
No, no access permits, but kudos, I just wanted to give kudos to Peter, because he helped us the other day with our scanning. From our printer to our computer, and between him and Al, they got us all jiffy'd up in like fifteen minutes.
Oh, I I mean, and and I see the, you know, the Bonfellow Fair website gets updated like before you even ask for it.
Yeah.
So, I mean, I totally think we missed the boat, but it it's the boat we're on right now. It doesn't necessarily mean we have to stick with it. It could be that Hannah and or Peter, after they tweak it, might be able to, you know, port it into something else.
Can we, can we take the website over and not have to pay them anything, or is it the proprietor?
We've already paid for it.
No, we paid, but it's it's not, it's not an annual? Is it a one?
I think it's.
It was like a three year contract up the front.
And then we get a free year for the fourth year or something.
Okay, well, still, at some point, I mean, Peter and Hannah will both, probably both still be here, and or there could be a third person who's got the knowledge base to port it out and port it into something that's simpler to use, if they can't fix it. I'm hoping that they can.
I think it's called coding. I think it's called coding.
What? I don't think that's coded. You have to, you have to port all of the stuff out of the existing site and upload it into a new program that makes it simpler to use.
So, um.
Yeah, coding is maybe what they'd be doing, but Lisa.
Lisa, you you said that you had ordered an owl system for us for the.
And it's in.
Yep, the owl's in. I'm waiting for the um company to give us the the laptop that will go along with it, and then we'll.
So you'll get, you'll get.
Have some hopelessly trading on it.
And and uh Lisa pointed out to me earlier today, because I went on to G Nat, I always go G Nat, but it's G Nat. I went on to G Nat and and was looking for like, where's our, you know, nothing's there since like twenty four. Well, it turns out that they're putting everything up on YouTube, which is the same thing this, which is the same thing the state is doing
Right, so there's a special channel.
On all of their committees and all of their, everything is up on YouTube, and I remember, I think, I think that Jeff said something, or Dean, or both, said something about like, oh, yeah, that's really simple, so we, I I would like to move to authorize Lisa to spend some general fund money to pay for a YouTube channel, so, and the YouTube channel can link to our website, so everything.
Is that how it's done? We have to buy a YouTube channel?
It goes up on.
You do, but if you're already part of Google, it's part of their workspace, so it'll, it all depends on what you own. So it's it's an add-on, it's very inexpensive. Google wants to own your technology, they want to be your technology provider.
Yeah, of course.
Yeah.
I'd be happy to talk to you about that anytime.
Okay.
You were talking about the wireframe. What you need Peter and or Hannah to do is look at the wireframe.
No, no, I'm talking about, we're talking about the owl.
I know, I'm going back on the other one. It's your, it's your website to see, the web, the wireframe tells you everything.
Back frame, so so maybe Jeff can do it.
The wire, okay, the wireframe, okay.
Maybe Jeff can do it too, then. So we've got three people that know what they're talking about. Work together, make it happen.
Okay, um, so that that's been ordered, and and how are you on the payroll system? Is you get that all under control now?
It's almost there. So for the next payroll, which will be the eleventh, we will be using the new system. It's a lot of work to change over to a different company, but we're, we're getting there.
But no one's on, no one's on paychecks anymore. Everybody is on direct deposit, and so.
No one's on paychecks.
But but you, every, the the town employees all got paid when they were supposed to.
Well, we're still using the other company.
Correct, but they, but, so nobody's been shorted, or, but you.
That wasn't happening. What's happening was they were not submitting our payments to the state of the month.
They're not filing, they're not filing our taxes.
I know, but I'm just, I'm just checking to make sure.
That happened to us.
Yeah.
So why are they doing that now?
Well, the new company won't start until April.
No, but it's the old company. I mean, we just got it, we just got a check.
I don't know. They don't have the quarterly, they won't have a quarterly information to us.
Oh, yeah, quarterly is due by the, yeah, the, yeah, middle of, middle of April.
Middle of like, of April.
Okay, but you're on it, so.
I'm hoping.
Okay, thank you.
I'm hoping we don't have any more issues with the other company.
All right, so, um.
Correspondence?
I don't have any.
We have um the minutes of uh the last meeting, which was Wednesday, March nineteenth. Have you guys reviewed them?
Yep.
Yes.
I made a small change.
You did?
Yeah.
Okay, and that's been, it's been taken care of?
Yeah, it's actually, it's it's it addresses you, it's up here, uh, because it didn't say, it says, as Colin will discuss options with Goldstone regarding, we didn't authorize it, you didn't vote for it, but we said, hey, Stuart.
I'll at least talk to him and we'll, I'll come back with more information.
And you did, and you have been, and that was what was at the last meeting, so it wasn't in there, so I needed to make sure.
Thank you. I'm glad you changed it on me. Uh, okay, uh, can I get a motion on the minutes?
Motion to approve the minutes of the nineteen.
I'm sorry, Alex.
Three nineteen.
Oh, just, I don't want to forget about the election stuff that I have.
Okay.
And after you guys do that.
I didn't know where to say.
Yeah, I forgot that, thanks.
Okay, um.
I'm seconding.
Motion made and seconded to approve the minutes of March nineteenth. On favor, say aye.
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 Okay. Hmm? Is the storm in out? I don't know.
I don't think so.
You said it wasn't going to.
Guaranteed zero to a hundred inches is what I heard.
Yeah, okay.
So those two properties that you were talking about, the ones that haven't sold and all those, they weren't even on the last tax sale?
No, because Kevin's, Kevin's got fired of putting them on when they weren't sold.
Yes, that they haven't been on.
So we gotta do something.
Yeah.
Okay.
We ought to.
Well, I know, we're trying to, okay, um.
Alex.
Alex, yes, sir. I'm sorry, sir.
Okay, so, um.
So what's the, what is this in reference to, please?
Election.
Uh, these, the special meeting that we're having, or the special election that we're having. So at the last uh select board meeting, um, you guys had tasked us with uh doing a bunch of stuff, so uh, one of the things was I had to talk to the state about, because we're, we're all assuming that we're going to paper ballot. Everybody wants to go to paper ballot.
Likely will happen, but it has to be a vote at the side.
So.
Well, you should be prepared.
In in preparation for that, I, and I cleared it with the state that we can have, um, can have paper ballots prepared that say more than yes and no, that actually explain what what yes and what no means. So I have that here. I've taken a little bit of input and I've tweaked it a little bit, so the first one uh is a little bit different, so we'll go by the first one that works for you guys. So.
And and Scott will be explaining it as well, but.
Yeah, well, and hopefully that postcard also explains it, but I know, you know, people get in there and it gets confusing, and if people are gonna vote, we want to make sure they know exactly what they're voting for. So that was that. Uh, Billy, you had brought up the um issue of somebody had possibly been campaigning inside of the school.
Yeah.
So I also talked to the state about that. Um, basically, it's just, you know.
There's a set area, right?
There, well, so you are not allowed to campaign inside of an election place.
Yeah, I knew that.
You, so just nothing inside at all, and the residing officer, who is Beth and her and I discussed this, um, can set a place for campaigning, just like with the signs, so we are.
Supposed to be like a certain number of feet from the building?
Uh, no, it's actually, it's actually not done by feet. It's just an area that people are visible, but they're also not in the weather.
Not obstructing, right, not obstructing anyone.
So.
You can't be standing at the door saying, here's what you do.
No, you can't.
Yeah, you cannot be standing at the door.
You can't be in the building.
We're also, we're not trying to hide anybody when they're doing this. Uh, so just like the signs, when we did the sign policy here, I have drafted up a, here's a couple of copies to go around, um, a campaigning and sign policy. Basically, I just took the one that was for here and I changed it for the town garage, um, so it applies to uh town garage, transfer station, as well as.
Oh, and you want, you want to, the motion, you want us to motion and 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 approve that to next?
Yes, it, I mean, where you can, yeah, so there's two blank ones.
It's only the first one, Julie.
Oh, I know, but I think that this is more clear.
Which one?
Keeping, I think it's keeping the select board at three seats. Sorry, not to be a grandma.
No, 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 I told you.
Isn't that what it said on the first one?
That's why.
No, it says keep.
Oh, keeping.
That's why I'm bringing it to you guys, is I want your input, um, because we want to make this as clear as possible. Um, so I've got the little map there down at the bottom, and I discussed this with Scott also, because this is his area. We obviously can't have people set up in the parking lot, because that's a safety hazard, um, and when we open up the bay doors, if we have people set up right against that building, then they're kind of, when people are standing just outside of the bay doors, then they're kind of campaigning in the election area. So, um, I figured that when you drive down Old Town Road, there's that ditch line, so immediately on the.
The the small green strip.
Yeah, exactly. So immediately right there, you would have the signs, so then, when you're driving by, you can see the signs, and then just on the other side of the signs, in the, I believe it's the blue circle area, would be where people are allowed to campaign. So that's right on the side of the road, so that they can be seen, but they're also, they're not in the road and they're not in the parking area.
Right, yeah.
But this is only when this is used as a voting location?
Yes.
Uh, that's it, so.
But, but actually, so the the campaigning and the sign policy would apply to it all the time. So you could, you could in fact put a sign out there.
Just like you can put it right now on the map.
Well, not, not right now, because it's not, because it's.
It's not open yet.
Yeah, it's one week. You're allowed to put them out one week before and they have to be put up.
No, I'm saying the septic, the septic is the designated area for, at the town hall.
Exactly. Yep.
So you're just saying that's the designated area at the garage.
Yeah, so if you wanna, it's right there on the side of the road.
Stand there and say, vote for me, vote for me, vote for me.
Everybody can see it when they drive by and, but you're not, you're also not in the way, you're not at risk of being hit by a car.
Is, so this is just because it's a town-owned property?
Yes.
Okay.
And we are going to get with Margaret at the school to talk about one up there.
Oh, that's exactly what I was gonna follow it up with.
Okay.
Man, just.
So you mean for when we have town meetings up there?
Yes.
So that we have an area up there that's designated.
I think it's just, it's just easier, it's cleaner.
Well, then people know.
Then, then we have a policy.
I, I think it was inadvertent, I don't know. I think that's, I don't think it was maliciously intended.
Yes.
It's just illegal and, and actionable, actually.
Yeah, and. And so we're actually, I talked to Scott, we're also going to make an announcement at this meeting that, you know, there's no campaigning in this area. If you wanna campaign, you go right over there and you can set up a table, a booth, whatever you wanna do, it just has to be, it's a designated area for that.
And, and you could even explain that there'll be one up at the town, where we normally have town meetings, but it's not designated yet.
Yeah, we have to get with Margaret because that's.
But just to let people know that that will be, there will be one there. So I would move to accept the, what is it called?
Have you had a chance to read it?
The political campaign and campaign sign policy at the Win Hall Transfer Station in Highway Department.
I would move to accept that.
I will second that.
Okay. You'll get a copy. So the motion has been made and seconded for the Win Hall Station sign, political sign policy. Is there any more discussion?
Yep.
No more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oh, sorry. So that's a good one.
A lot of things.
Yes, thank you.
At the least.
And then you'll just get the original back to me? Perfect.
Okay.
Will this get recorded?
Yeah, we're gonna record that. It won't be in the land records, but it'll be in our, our clerk, but we're all, we're other.
So what was the other?
This is the one you want, that's the sign.
What was the other piece about, were, were you looking for some advice on what you were gonna use for the wording of the ballot?
Um, is right, yeah.
He already, didn't he hand it to me?
Yeah.
Oh, no, I don't leave this one one.
Oh, it didn't, I thought it came this way, my bad.
I thought it did, yeah, actually, 'cause I saw it.
Yeah, but, but there's five choices.
No, it's one printed five times.
It's just, yeah, it's just, so, so what it is, is I've set that up essentially, so we're just gonna take the paper cutter and we're gonna cut it into five ballots.
Oh, so people can just, I see, that's what you're making, this is the ballot and, I see. Okay, I didn't understand that.
Yeah.
I, I just looked at it.
And this is the correction that, the clarification that you.
Which is, yeah, totally fine. I mean, that's, that's why I'm bringing it to you guys, so that we can all be in agreeance with this. Um, but that way, we're also not wasting a whole sheet of paper for one ballot, and we can get five.
Okay, I'm sorry, I, I, I didn't see the.
I did read through all five of them, Stuart.
You did?
I, I think I read three, and then I realized that we're the same.
All right, so do you wanna vote on this, or are you happy with this?
I mean, if you guys, if you guys.
I don't think we need to vote.
I think this is all.
We, we give you a voice of, of confidence.
Okay.
Yeah, because it's not even, it's not even, it theoretically could not even be needed, I mean, but it likely will. It's, it's gonna be needed. There's gonna be a call for paper ballot.
Okay, so I guess we just give you a vote of confidence of how you're doing it.
Yep, I'll go ahead and I'll get a bunch of votes made for our meeting.
Okay.
And, uh, you guys are all aware of the DCA meeting, which is the.
Twenty.
Twenty ninth.
Twenty ninth.
Eight a.m. and a board of abatement meeting right after.
Yeah, I got that.
Okay.
Cool.
And it's on the website.
And everything is, everything is posted in town for all of us.
When, when is the BCA meeting?
Twenty ninth.
Oh, April.
Yes.
Yeah.
At what time?
Eight a.m.
Okay, I guess I probably put that.
It was an email.
Yes, it was. I just haven't put it in my.
I did, I put it in my.
It's in my email inbox, which means I still have to do something.
Do it.
I'm gonna do it right now.
Or set a reminder.
I have to set two alarms, so I don't forget.
Yeah, I do that, too.
Okay.
A week and a day.
All right. Do we have any other business coming for the meeting other than bills?
No, do we wanna go back into executive session, or?
We, we have, we wanted to discuss more, but we didn't wanna keep people out of the room any longer than we had to, because we had not made a decision.
I'd be game to make a decision on that and move forward. I think we kinda need to, to move forward with it.
So do you wanna go back?
But when is our next meeting? Do, do you know? I don't think I got it, thanks.
I think it's the twenty.
What?
It's for the, no, the next GOOS meeting, I think.
Yeah, let me just see, let me just see, Tasha, we knew it was worth a validation. She did.
Wasn't it two weeks? Oh, she didn't send us a new one.
She didn't send a new one.
I, I don't think it's tomorrow, I don't think it's tomorrow, or this Friday.
I don't think so either.
I don't have it on my calendar.
But we're not meeting again before, so, uh, I mean, the only concern would be that in theory, I mean, we didn't put a deadline on, uh, on people applying. It's not like we got a plethora of people applying for the short-term rental administrator, and we did just get two. Uh, we got one and then we got two. You know, I, I, I'd like to make the decision so that at the next meeting with GOOS, somebody's in place and can join in and start to get up to speed on it and look at the website and see how it flows and works. So I, I would like to go into accept, I would motion to go into executive session.
And discuss it a little bit more, then we come out and make a decision.
See if we can make a decision.
We can't make a decision in there, but we, we have a few more questions, okay? All right, so do we wanna do the bills now?
Yeah.
Okay.
Let's do those.
Okay, so we're doing, we're not doing.
Not for a minute.
Okay.
I guess the bill's on tonight.
Oh, yeah, Al does the bills. You do the, yeah, you do these things, right?
Is this manual?
Manual, I was small. Good night, Jeff.
Derek, the rest of us, because yes.
What is NIS?
That is our life insurance, long-term disability and short-term disability company. We pay for our three months in advance.
One front, one back.
Uh, Madison National Life Insurance was taken over by NIS. I don't even know what they're like, National Insurance Services or something. It's a big company that took over Madison National Life. Madison National something.
I may not know who our providers are. I know when a new thing comes through.
And that one only comes once every three months, so.
Going out now?
I hope not.
Probably Bill's checking it. He's bound and charmed, it's not going to.
Mine's bound to determine it's not going to either.
This is the one that has to drive.
Let's see how that works out.
Beth, do you have to pay our postage out of pocket? Does she have to pay our postage from the pocket and get reimbursed for it?
For the, uh, for those postcards that we sent out?
She had to pay express coffee directly.
Oh.
Oh.
When, when it comes to, um, sometimes like we have to do the, that at the post office, we have to take it out of pocket, do an expensive work.
Oh, okay.
A lot of it, we just run.
Because the problem is, we don't have a debit card, because it takes a debit card to the post office.
Does it?
Yeah.
I've always just picked cash, remember, so.
Yeah, I just felt bad that you'd have to wait to be reimbursed.
I need a tax bill also, when you go downstairs.
Not tonight, it's not open tonight.
Yeah, he is, yeah.
No, I'm gonna go have you bills.
Yeah, he's gonna do it. Oh, this, oh, this is the, that's the face that goes on top.
Yep, I'm waiting for.
I went this way.
I know, I'm being a little slow.
It's okay, no, there's a lot of people, you got the, you got the big pile.
We got general ones here.
There.
Did you see this?
No.
Oh, you did not see this?
No, it's okay, keep going.
No, that's what we do. Go afull and game till somebody gets hurt.
You could be the star of the show.
We don't like gravel, huh?
Yeah, that was a big, a big hole.
Yeah.
You're like my wife. She says, oh, what's this? I said, I haven't seen it yet, how can we tell?
Oh, listen to the.
I know.
Oh, good, because he's expensing readings, right? Doing some stuff.
This is the press conference I was talking about, the mailing.
Yeah, that's why I was like, oh, I would hate, I hate for people to have to pay out of their own pocket and get reimbursed for stuff. Like, you know, just feel bad.
Well, it sometimes happens.
Would you give me some of that?
They don't have a cram over, so.
I know you've got to take it back. I don't think you're running out of mine, so.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We got you covered. I don't even know what that says, but you're human, no? What does it say?
I haven't seen it yet.
No, I'm seeing it right now.
Maya, it says Maya.
Maya?
Jeremiah.
Oh, that's one.
Oh, what is it?
Maya was.
The receipt for the cleaning of his AR.
Oh, yes.
Yeah. Right, I didn't. Maya.
No, they're having an, an issue with it.
It's a nickname.
And I think that's what everybody calls it.
So we'll get put this onto the bottom of that.
You'd think they'd go with the beginning of the name, not the end, but.
Yeah, right.
Most nicknames.
Jay, you're going Jay. Jer.
You could just start, start that trend, Jay.
Hey, Jay. Seventy-five miles, driving seventy-five miles, putting kids on bus, seventy-five miles.
Yeah, that's only one out of several proposals.
Did, did you go to the media?
Yes, I was there.
Yeah.
None of the bills in their current form are really workable. They have to go for crossover, so. Really what's happening is, the governor said, we need to do two things. We need to get tax rates under control and we need to have this equal opportunity for education. Those are, those are the two goals of his plan. Everybody said, we agree, that makes sense. But as soon as they went to the House and Senate, everybody started attaching their own agendas to education.
Which is the American, the government way.
Right, so now the Senate bill is completely ignoring the tax, the lowering tax portion of it, and the House bill is completely ignoring the fact that there are not operating the school districts that don't have high schools.
Excuse me just a moment. Uh, you've all seen the bills?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, yeah, sorry.
Yeah, no, I, I didn't, I didn't realize you guys wanted to hear it, so.
No, well, I did, but I wanted to finish this.
The leaving at BBA was basically a rundown of what the current Senate bill is. That bill passed out of the Education Committee, and the House bill also passed out of the House Education Committee. So now those two bills are being marked up and getting ready for crossover. So the Senate bill will go to the House, the House bill will go to the Senate, and.
I thought it was way past crossover time.
No.
They haven't done it yet. The governor has already said he won't sign any bill that doesn't accomplish his two main goals that he laid out, which is get the tax rate under control and equal opportunity for educational outcomes for kids in those states. So really, right now, we're in the figuring stuff out phase. Um, there's a lot of not realistic proposals from both sides.
Sure.
But there, every single day, and I mean every day, I'm getting legislative updates daily. There, the House is moving closer to the Senate and the Senate's moving closer to the House. Eventually, we're gonna end up with something in the middle.
It will still fall apart.
The, the foundation formula, which is the proposal from the governor to solve the problem of the taxes, is actually a really good idea and will almost certainly be implemented regardless of what happens with the restructuring. The problem we're running into right now, so you could do the, you could technically do the foundation formula, which is getting rid of the model we have now for funding. You could, um, you could get rid of it now and replace the foundation formula without restructuring the school district. So you don't have to reorganize the SUs, you don't have to do forced mergers, you don't have to have any of that stuff. You could just change the way they calculate the budget, and that would be a good starting point. And I suspect and am advocating that that's what they should do to start. So what the foundation formula would do is remove all the uncertainty that we have right now.
I think someone can charge it.
From the budgeting process. So right now, we all voted on a school budget at town meeting, and we gave you guys a projection of what the tax rate would be. Now, all the budgets that got passed are gonna go to the state. They're gonna figure out how much money they have to collect. And then they're gonna set the tax rate based on how much money they need. So if a bunch of other districts overspend, then when, when we get our tax rate, it's gonna be higher than what we told you it was gonna be, because the state has to collect more money in order to make up that shortfall. That's the way it works now. So we don't know what the tax rate's gonna be when we pass a budget, and neither does the state, so it's like a catch-22. We can't tell you what the tax rate's gonna be till the state tells us what the number is, and the state can't tell us the number till we tell you what the budget is, and we can't pass a budget if we can't tell what the tax rate is. So the foundation formula gets rid of all that. It says, everybody's gonna get, this is the number, the number's the same for everybody. You plug in your variables for your town, and this is how much money you're gonna have to collect, and so we can tell you what your tax rate's gonna be and how much money you're gonna get.
Right, but the foundation form is like a wish and a dream right now.
No, not really. I mean, the foundation forms are.
You think exactly that's gonna happen between?
The foundation form is the only thing that's not a wish and a dream. It's the only thing that's real, that they could actually do and implement without. The wish and the dream is, they wanna take Bennington County, uh, Bennington Supervisory Union, us, the Bennington-Rutland Supervisory Union, and then Rutland, right, that's three separate SUs. They wanna merge them all together. But that means.
It's like five statewide or something, right?
You guys, you guys ever been to the BRSU building down on Route Seven?
Yes.
It's a massive building with the computer systems, offices, administrators, people all over. They wanna get, there's one of those in Rutland and there's one of those in Bennington. They wanna bulldoze ours, they wanna bulldoze the one in Rutland, they wanna bulldoze the one in Bennington, and they wanna make one big one for all three. Does that sound like you're gonna save money or cost a lot of money? That's the pipe tool. So right now, what everyone's arguing about is, uh, how are we going to actually physically restructure the governance? And there, and there's just too much disagreement, so there's, it's painfully slow. But the foundation formula part, that has to happen first, in my opinion. This is just me speaking, not, I'm not speaking for the board, I'm just speaking for myself. If they do that first, it's gonna tell us which districts are overspending, and then we can target the overspending districts and say, okay, you guys need reform, so we're gonna focus the, the governance and the restructuring on these areas. 'Cause there are, there are school districts right now where if they plug themselves into the foundation formula, they're twenty million dollars over budget.
So how do we get you up into Congress? I mean.
Not yet.
Really?
I'm gonna stay away for a minute, but, but we're talking with legislators, I mean.
Thank you for your.
Our ideas are getting through and they're coming, we're hearing our ideas being repeated back to us at the state level, so.
Well, I think we gotta go into a quick, to make a decision on that.
She's the chairman of.
Good night.
I'm probably heading out, so.
All right, we, we will, we will be probably.